Five council members are present and boarding this evening will be recorded using the city's electronic voting system. Now, Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak during closed session public comment?
I've received none, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, the City Council will recess to closed session for the purpose of conducting regular city business. Good evening, everyone. At this time, the City Council will convene to consider public matters. Members of the public may speak on any matter that's listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak on any matter listed on the agenda, we ask you to please fill out a blue speaker card and provide it to the city clerk at this time. Please also provide any written materials you wish to have distributed to the City Council for any item that's on the agenda. As required by state law, please limit your comments on agenda items to the specific item at issue. And if you have comments that are not listed on the agenda, you can make those during the time that we call general public comments. Finally, please only address your comments to the City Council as staff will only respond to questions from the City Council and not from public speakers. Now, when the city clerk indicates and you see the green light on the podium illuminated, your three-minute comment period will begin. And we always like to start every one of our council meetings with an invocation, so we're really grateful to have our elder Tim Bruton from Grace Community Church, who's also serving on our Community Services Commission and a former high-ranking military Marine Corps veteran. So, thank you, Tim, for being here tonight.
Having me, Mayor. City Council, city staff, commissioners that are abound, and community, thank you for having me. Join me in prayer. Lord God, we thank you for blessing us with this beautiful city. We ask that you be present this evening and provide the leadership with wisdom. Fill them with grace, Lord. Give them understanding and unity of the Spirit as they make decisions that affect those of us around them. Strengthen the bonds of community and help us grow in our trust for you and in our love for one another, so your light may shine brightly in our city. Father, we thank you again for the City Council, our city staff, and our first responders who keep us safe. Bless them and watch over them. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Sam. Appreciate that invocation tonight. Next, we're going to have the honor of Boy Scout Troop 765 to please come forward and are going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance tonight. And I had the honor of going to Scout-a-rama their weekend before last, so good to see you gentlemen again. So, at this time, I'd like to have everyone please rise and Scouts, when you're ready to go ahead and start with the pledge, lead us from that.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd like to have you gentlemen also come up on stage. We'll get a quick photograph opportunity with the council members. Well, gentlemen, we want to thank you very much for taking a little bit of time out of your evening and being here tonight. And thanks very much for your leadership for these young men. And you guys are an inspiration for the next generation for us to have young men like yourself come and also be patriotic and understand the values here in the city of Lake Forest. We appreciate the work that you're doing in our community. And so, at this time, we're going to get a photograph. A round of applause for these fine young gentlemen. Appreciate it, guys. All right, moving on to our closed session report. Mr. City Attorney, are there any reportable items from our closed session tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no action report this evening.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak during closed session public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we received one public comment, and that is from Mr. Andrew O'Connor.
Okay. Evening, Mr. O'Connor.
Good evening, Councilman Serbo. I'm back again to talk about the $1.2 million the Lake Forest residents paid for attorney fees with Best, Best &amp; Krieger. In a previous council meeting, there was discussion about going forward in the future. And anytime the city goes out for procurements or for contracts, they go and get bids. And one of the systems they use is a system called Planet Bids, which is a broadcast that goes out to all types of vendors, whether in construction, electrical, landscaping, whatever. The city's used it. We've gotten bids on it. I'm asking you, Mayor, what's the progress of the Planet Bids for the city attorney fees for the future? Sitting there and ignoring me doesn't do any good for the community, Councilman. Well, we pay $279 an hour for attorneys and $159 an hour for paralegals and $109 for administrative assistance. If you divide that into $1.2 million, that's a hell of a lot of money. And you, North City Attorney, could explain where it's going. It's going right here to the firm, right here. Managing partner Eric Garner. I'm sure of that $1.2 million, Mr. Garner is taking his cut. I'm sure Jeffrey Ballinger from the Executive Committee is taking his cut, as well as Scott Durford, Elizabeth Hall. This is all on their website. This is the Executive Committee. Charity Schiller, Jamie Zamoff, Susan Plummer. I talked to her on February 28th for 12 minutes. She wrote down my concerns, never called me back. Steve Fletcher and Danielle Sakai. So, once again, what are we doing that legal jeopardy that we have to pay $1.2 million in legal fees to Best, Best &amp; Krieger? I want to know why. And I want to know the status of what other legal firms are we talking to or we're not talking to. I'm glad you're taking notes. Can I get a response within 10 days? Or is it going to be another non-answer from you, the way you always respond back? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next, we're going to get a report from our student liaison at El Toro High School from Arav Rajpurah, student liaison. If you would mind coming forward and giving us your report. Welcome.
Good to see you all again. To start with athletics, our football team's homecoming game was nothing short of extraordinary. Sporting the Bull Ring of Fire theme, our players knocked Pacifica High School out with a 35-to-zero shutdown. On the same day, we also had our first school pep rally, and we celebrated El Toro's 50th anniversary with our homecoming dance the following day. A heartfelt shout-out goes out to El Toro's ASB for organizing these three major events back-to-back without break. I would know, also in ASB. Looking ahead, our next home football game is set to take place on October 20th against Aliso Niguel. As always, tickets are going to be $10, and we hope to see you all there to support our team. Girls' varsity flag football will have a home game tomorrow against Capistrano Valley High School at 6:30 PM. They'll go on to have three more home games on the 5th, once again against CVHS, on the 9th against El Modena, and on the 11th against Centennial High School. All games will start at 6:30, and seating will be free. Meanwhile, our boys' varsity water polo team will be competing at home against San Clemente High School on October 5th, starting at 4:00 PM. Our girls' varsity volleyball team is also certainly making us proud, having defeated Mission Viejo 3-1. They'll be gearing up for their final game against Mission Viejo once again on October 11th, with the game starting at 6:15 in the El Toro Oxygen. So, please feel free to come out and show your support for our ladies' final season game. For our cross-country enthusiasts, this week is a pretty big one. Our athletes will be racing at both the Wednesday Preview Meet and the Saturday Clovis Invitational, which is the second biggest cross-country meet in California. The event will be taking place in Woodward Park, Fresno, so wish our Chargers good luck. Moving on from athletics, on October 20th, we are inviting our community's young ones to join us for the Junior Charger Clinic, where students from kindergarten to sixth grade can sign up for a day of learning cheers, dances, and other valuable skills from our pep and cheer squad. It's an opportunity for our younger generation to connect with the spirit of El Toro, and sign-ups will be on the Cheer and Pep website. Speaking of connecting, our school's murder mystery drama performance from October 4th to the 7th is sure to captivate viewers. Tickets are only $10 and can be purchased online on the ETH's Drama website or at the door. Back-to-school night was also a tremendous success, providing parents and students alike with a chance to reconnect to our dedicated teachers and our faculty members. Our blood drive, which began on September 27th, will continue to October 6th. During this, El Toro students will have the opportunity to donate blood and help provide much-needed resources to patients in need. As we look forward to this coming month, please do keep an eye out for our upcoming canned food drive, which will be organized by ASB. Donations can be made at local grocery stores, where students will help collect food and redistribute it to those who need it the most. And that should be it for our recap. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you, Ar. That was a well-delivered report there. You have a future in public speaking, I think, very well. Thank you very much for all the activities that are going on there at El Toro High School. And I kind of mentioned in the past that my wife and I and some other of the council members actually have attended the 50th anniversary event, which was really great because my wife was one of the first graduating classes at El Toro High School back in 1977. And they had all the different decades set up there, so really appreciate the legacy that you're carrying on. Appreciate you coming tonight and delivering us the information about what's happening at El Toro High School.
Thank you guys so much. I definitely remember Mr. Voit's coming, saw you there at the game. Thank you for your support. Yeah, have a good day, guys.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have one presentation item tonight, so I have a motion to approve presentation item number two and a second.
Motion approved.
Okay, Councilmember you and Councilmember Voight for the motion and the second. Let's vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of presentation number two?
Certainly, Mayor. The title of the presentation is "The Proclamation Declaring October 8 through 14, 2023 Fire Prevention Week."
Thank you. So, for this hot topic, Mr. Assistant City Manager, could you please introduce this item for us?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers, this is a proclamation declaring October 8 through 14 the Fire Prevention Week, just like our assistant city clerk said. And I'm going to invite up Barrick to say a few words from the Orange County Fire Authority.
Look, Chief, good to see you again. Thanks for keeping our neighborhood safe. If you haven't said it late, we appreciate your service. Thank you.
No, good to see you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for this fire prevention proclamation. In Lake Forest, last year, we had approximately 80 structure fires. The key to preventing these fires is awareness and outreach and education to the public. So, I'm going to be brief about this because I know you have other things to do tonight, but it starts with installation, inspect, and prevention, and that goes with smoke alarms. It's important to install them in the correct areas of your residence, making sure they're on every floor and properly installed in every room in the residence on the ceiling. Inspecting them. This is a time of year with daylight savings time approaching. To inspect your smoke detectors, make sure you change the batteries with your smoke detectors, and you can maintain them by vacuuming them out because sometimes they accumulate a lot of dust. Smoke detectors have a lifespan of about 10 years. If your smoke detector is at 10 years, you should replace it. And then, the protect part. By doing all of these items, it's going to protect lives and save lives. One thing I do want to mention before I leave is that October 14th, we have an open house at the fire stations throughout our department. But here, especially in Lake Forest, at Fire Station 19, which is one of our busiest fire stations on El Toro Road, that'll be open to the public to come into the firehouse from 10 to about 2:00 PM to meet the firefighters, meet our fire prevention specialists and the educationalists, and learn more about our fire department, as well as things that you can do to protect and keep your family safe. At Station 54 off of Pauling, that's our Urban Search and Rescue Task Force station, they're also going to have an open house. Same hours, open to the public. Once again, thank you for this proclamation and Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you for this awareness update for us to make sure that we have this timely information to do the kind of things that will help keep us that much more safer and protect us. And I often kind of talk to people about the four stages of weather we have here in Southern California because people say we don't, but I talk about we have fire, flood, wind, and earthquake as our four seasons. So, you know, sometimes we have more than one season at a time, so you're involved in a couple of those. So, we appreciate you bringing this information to us and helping our residents do the kind of things that they need to, to keep themselves safe. Any council comments? Very good. Thank you very much for coming tonight and giving us this information. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Oh, we have a proclamation. Okay, go ahead and come up on stage then. Well, the proclamation we have here recognizing October 8 through 14 as Fire Prevention Week. And it goes through a bunch of whereas about fire safety and how serious this is and the awareness that we need to have here. So, I want to present this prevention, this proclamation to you, and thank you very much for the service that you provide for the city of Lake Forest. And a round of applause for our firefighters here in Lake Forest. All right, we're going to move on to public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, again, please fill out a blue speaker card, turn it to the city clerk, and your name will be called. Comments are limited to three minutes of unentwrited time per person. The council and staff, again, will not respond to questions or comments during the public comment period. However, if you do, you leave your contact information on your blue card. Staff will contact you to address any relevant issues that are raised during your comment. When you're called to speak, approach the podium. Your three minutes will begin when the green light on the public comment podium illuminates, and the green light will remain illuminated for two minutes. And when the light changes from green to yellow, speakers will have one minute left to conclude their comments. And when this light changes from yellow to red, please conclude your thoughts and return to your seat. A timer will no longer be displayed on the screen. And I ask our Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have received three public comment cards. First speaker is Ms. Pamela Estes.
Okay. Welcome back, Pam. Good to see you.
Thanks. Once again, I'm Pam Estes. I'm the CEO, and I'm here to give a brief update on Boys and Girls Club. So, for the past 10 years, we've been serving families that live or go to school in Lake Forest. Since 2019, the Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach has invested over $1.5 million in the lives of this community. Now, I'm asking the community, excuse me, to step up and help support our kids too. This year, between January 1st and October 2nd, our service to Lake Forest included, during the school year, serving nearly 700 students each day at Oxford Prepatory's Lake Forest Campus. This year, in our after-school and summer programs, we've served about 200 young people who live in Lake Forest at little or no cost to families. Any program fees that are collected only cover about a third of the cost to our organization, which is why donations are so important. Later this year, we'll be kicking off our Mountain View program for families that live there. I'm here to ask for the community to coalesce around our future, which is our kids. The stronger our village is, the more resilient and successful young people will be. Every person in Lake Forest has a role to play and can make a difference in the lives and futures of the children we serve. Our annual Night Under the Stars fundraiser, which specifically supports these families, is coming up on October 14th at this community center, and I'm inviting everyone to join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam, for updating us on what's going on with the Boys and Girls Club. And what a wonderful organization. I had the opportunity to see your operation down Laguna Beach there last year and just truly impressed with the work that you're doing and the impact that you're having and the wonderful support that's really rallying around you there too. So, we're looking forward to attending the annual event there. It's always a great time that you put on there, and we're looking forward to hoping to be raising a bunch of money there for you. So, thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay, Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Bob Holtzclaw.
Good evening, Mr. Holtzclaw.
Good evening. Bob Holtzclaw, resident of Lake Forest. I'm going to speak on Heroes Park. Bikes have been thrown down the hill now from the bushes. Residents are finally taking back their park. They're doing it, not anybody else. Broken fence is evidently a couple of days ago is still there. That was called in about a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know if it's been fixed yet. You know, I hope they don't do it with some baling wire and just do a Band-Aid fix on it. If you see the pictures in front of you, illegal aliens now are taking bikes apart on the other side of the railroad tracks. You can see three bikes there being taken apart. If you look at the far-left picture right there, just faded, you can see someone else. He's spraying graffiti along the wall. Graffiti means the next step, they're going to be gang members, right here in the city. Let's clean it up now before it starts getting too bad. Another thing is Home Depot. Usually, there was about six or seven day laborers down there. Now, there's over 20. I asked some of the merchants down there if they wanted to call the property manager, but hey, nobody wants to get involved. And I don't blame them, quite frankly, but the city can contact the property manager and see what they can do, and then we can get those people out, at least on the sidewalk or wherever, or back where the day labor site. Years ago, we had an understanding with them that the only place they could be is where the day labor site is, off of Doronimo. Now, they wander all over the streets. Last, we have Mercy House. Anybody have the phone number for them? I mean, they get thousands of dollars, and we can't contact them. I'd love to have their phone number. And last thing, let's send a letter like we did with Iranians. Let's form a letter that says, "Close the California," well, actually, the southern border. Right now, we've got over 7,000. By time 2024 comes around, we're going to have at least 8,000 people. 85,000 children don't know where they are. They're just disappeared someplace. We've got fentanyl coming across with 200 people a day are dying of fentanyl. I think it's a good idea if you form a letter. At least do it just like Iran did. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Our last general public comment speaker tonight is Mr. Andrew O'Connor.
O'Connor, I just spoke to the chief, and he's aware that my homeowners association, Foothill Ranch homeowners association, through our landscaping services, invested $800,000 to make 100-foot defensible space around the whole perimeter of our community, and he's thanked us for that. At the last council meeting, it was kind of interesting about the El Toro 50th anniversary, and Councilman Serbo shared that his wife was a graduate. But you know who we didn't hear was a graduate? Was Councilman Voits. Why is it, Councilman Voits, that you're not a graduate of El Toro High School? Hmm, interesting. You're not a graduate of any high school, are you? Hmm, interesting. Another thing on Voits, there was a presentation by staff on the Community Development Block Grant, which we've heard time and time again. Well-done presentation, informative. I'm sure Mr. Voits has heard it from D3 Supervisor Wagner. And at the end, Voits actually said to the speaker, "What's CDBG stand for?" Seriously, dude? You didn't even know what CDBG stood for, that whole presentation? You can't make this stuff up, folks. That's Scott Voits. But really, I'm here tonight, again, wondering, why are we paying $35,000 a month to Kidder Matthews when we have a facility manager on staff named Ken Ostino, who was a 2022 Employee of the Year? And when you look at the invoices that Councilman Serbo says to take a look at, I do, there's no documentation. It just says the services for that month for $35,000. So, what are they doing, Mayor? I've asked you that. You answered back in an email, which was a non-answer. So, I'm here again tonight. I want to know specifically, what is it that Kidder Matthews is doing to get $35,000 a month? Let me also say, I'm disappointed that the city manager, Deborah Rose, is absent. When asked to the city clerk, she said she had a more important meeting. Really? So, the $300,000 a year salary we give her, there's something more important on her calendar than coming to a city council meeting? Shame on you, city manager. Maybe you're afraid of my commendations for you and the poor job you're doing. I guess she probably heard enough. She probably wanted to duck out. So, Mayor, when can I get details on the $35,000 that Kidder Matthews is invoicing us? Can you give me a date? Okay, folks, she just sits there and looks at me, shook her head, yes. So, two weeks, two days? I've only been asking for it for a month. So, by not doing it, you have no courage. You have no courage to tell the people in the audience that you can't explain why we're spending not only $35,000 a month, $420,000 a year.
Thank you. Your time has expired, Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor, and I hope to get a response.
Do we have any other public comments this evening?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. I'd just like to say that for those that were in attendance and online, I also want to advise everyone that regularly we hear public comments from speakers that make statements that are incorrect, accusatory, disrespectful, and even rude. And we're conducting a business meeting, and we conduct ourselves with a decorum of professionalism, respect, and receiving input from residents in a productive manner for consideration in managing the city's business. We honor your First Amendment rights to share your thoughts in a productive way to help us make the best decisions possible for our community. I urge you to evaluate the manner and source of statements made during our time tonight. Please check the accuracy of information shared before making your own judgments. My own experience in my third year on this council is that we have members and staff who are passionate about making Lake Forest a very desirable, safe place to work, experience great amenities, and enjoy a great quality of life with family and friends. Our consistent track record of managing resources entrusted to us by our 87,000 residents bears out our strong performance in so many areas. Finally, I'll share that I have a deep desire to serve you as we continue to improve our community. Thank you for your participation and your support here tonight. And in Mr. O'Connor's comments, I've actually answered his questions and his concerns. He doesn't like the answers, so I'll be happy to respond. He doesn't like the answers, so I'll be happy to respond with the comments that you've made here tonight within the next week, so you'll have that information again. And again, the information that I provide is correct, and it's for operational things that we entrust our city staff to. We've hired them, they're competent, and they put us in a very strong position financially as well as operationally, and we'll address that based on your comments there tonight. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. This is items three through five on our agenda. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests to remove an item from the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
We do have one public comment for item number five.
Okay, item number five. Could you please read that item for us to be pulled?
Yes. The title of that item is "Cooperative Agreements with the Orange County Transportation Authority for the Countywide Traffic Signal Synchronization Baseline Project."
Okay, we'll pull that item for the time being. Do I have a motion to consider approving the other items as recommended?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Voits and a second from Councilmember Yu. Let's vote.
I am waiting on one more vote. Thank you. And that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, for item number five, then, how was this? Who was it that pulled this item?
The public commenter is Mr. Andrew O'Connor.
Okay.
Councilman Serbo, I must have struck a nerve with you, and I'm glad to hear that. I look forward to the specific information on the thirty-five thousand dollars that you have yet to provide. And let me ask you also, did you write that statement, or did the city attorney draft that for you?
It's my own words. Thank you.
Good. Man, you're a hell of an orator.
I know.
I know. It's your ego. So, the last council meeting, you guys signed off on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand payment to Stantec for traffic modeling. And here in the leaflet, Summer 2023, you guys are giving us an update on traffic. Very well done. Jonathan, very professional document. And then you open it up, and it goes in there and talks about the different intersections that are being done. In the last meeting, I asked, "Why don't we have El Toro Portola Arresente open?" Well, it'll get opened October. It's like, okay, whatever. Then I go and look at this, this cooperative agreement with the Orange County Transportation Authority. It's two-hundred-and-ninety-one pages, very detailed, from OCTA, about Measure M, and now it's OC GO. It's all there. So I'm saying, we got this with the county, OCTA. We got this right here rolling pretty good. Good job there, Wheeler. Don't say it often. So why are we spending two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars with Stantec for? We have no more residential, we're all built out. The last major roadway built was Alton. I think we need to look at Big Parkway because it's crumbling, especially if you're going to put that monstrous distribution center in there. So I'm coming back to my question. You can follow up on this, too. I'm glad you're taking notes, Councilman Serbo. Why are we spending two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars with Stantec? How does that go in with this? How is it going with tonight's agenda with the OCTA? I asked it last time, and I ask it again. I ask you to follow up and give me an answer, please. Otherwise, it's a waste of money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for comments. So for item number five, Madam City Clerk, could you read that again, please, for action by the city council?
Certainly, Mayor. The title is "Cooperative Agreements with the Orange County Transportation Authority for the Countywide Traffic Signal Synchronization Baseline Project."
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to move that item.
All right. A motion and second. And we're going to vote on that to approve that cooperative action.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to the two discussion items that we have on the agenda tonight. Madam City Clerk, could you please read the title of item number six?
The title of item number six is "The Strategic Economic Investment Program Update."
Thank you. Mr. Assistant Manager, please introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Sean McGovern, our deputy city manager, will give you a short PowerPoint and presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Just a quick update on the city's Strategic Economic Investment Program. If you recall, the Strategic Economic Investment Program, or SEEP budget, was approved by the city council on February fifteenth of 2022. The SEEP budget, I'm sorry, the SEEP budget was approved by the city council on February fifteenth, 2022, and the purpose of SEEP was to provide economic support to local businesses that were impacted by COVID-19. Within that SEEP budget, we had three line items, and that was restaurants, hotels, and other impacted industries, and a funding allocation provided for each of those. We came to that conclusion based on staff working with the Audit Committee and HDL, the city's economic development consultant. So that took place over a period of about three to six months. The programs that have been funded so far, that have hit those categories, are the Community Gift Card Program, also known as the BOGO program, and we've done three phases of that so far. Little over one-point-seven million dollars in funding provided to date. Over eighty-six businesses have been able to benefit from that program, mostly restaurants. We also provided two separate catalytic converter theft mitigation programs. There's the Painting and Etching Program and the Shield Program, total funding amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, and we're about halfway through the funding that was provided for both that PNE program and that Shield program. So we don't think we're at risk of running out of money on those programs anytime soon. We have about a hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars left in the city's BOGO account, and we expect that to sell out again, probably in early to mid-November, and I'll talk about that more here in a second. And the last program that was approved by the city council was the revival of the Taste of Lake Forest event for seventy-five thousand dollars. It's just some quick stats on the Community Gift Card Program. We're in the third phase of that now. Cards can be bought in increments of fifty and one hundred dollars with a maximum of three cards per purchaser. Some of the initial rounds of the first phase, we did a specific marketing to Lake Forest residents because we wanted them to kind of have first dibs, if you will, and that phase has passed. So this is now a program that's completely open to the public. We've issued over thirty thousand cards since the program was introduced in late 2022. And like I said, about a hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars in BOGO funds remain, and we spend through about twenty to thirty thousand dollars each week. So that's where we're kind of gauging that we're going to run out in early to mid-November. Now, just because we've run out of funds in the BOGO account, it doesn't mean that the program ends. At this time, little less than one million dollars in gift card funds are still in circulation because people buy them faster than they can spend them. So a lot of people will just buy three of the one-hundred-dollar cards and then spend those over several months. So we don't think it's, even if the program, even if the BOGO account runs out of money, we don't think that the program is just going to go away. There's still a huge amount of money that is in circulation. On the catalytic converter theft mitigation programs, all of the funds for this go towards local automotive repair shops that have been impacted by COVID-19. For the Painting and Etching Program, we have approved two-hundred-and-twenty-three applications so far, and for the Shield Program, we have approved a hundred-and-thirty-eight. So these are also very popular with residents. Last is the Taste of Lake Forest event. This will bring back a classic Lake Forest event that was last held in 2019 at the Foothill Ranch Town Center parking lot. It was a casual event with a dozen or so local restaurants setting up tasting booths along with other family-friendly activities. This re-envisioned event is scheduled to happen on May eleventh, 2024, at Heritage Hill Park here in Lake Forest. The aim here is to make this more of a premier Lake Forest event. Pretty fancy location at Heritage Hill. This is a popular destination for weddings, it's good for photos, it's going to be a great site for this re-envisioned event. SEEP funds will be used to help offset the costs of vendors to participate in this program. The city has partnered with the Chamber on this, and we know that they're really excited about bringing back what was a Great Lake Forest event with a new re-envisioned twist. So here's some financials. So the column all the way on the left is the categories of SEEP, and the allocation is on that second column. The third column is the amount of money that's been spent so far, or that staff have projected to be spent when the Community Gift Card Program funds are totally redeemed. So even with all of that work, if you see on there towards the bottom right, of the eight-point-three million dollars in economic assistance, even if we spend through everything that's been allocated so far, there's still six-point-three million dollars left. So we're about thirty percent of the way through the SEEP budget. You'll notice that we don't have anything listed for expenditures in the hotel category. To develop programs for the hotels budget category, staff needed more information from local hotels. Hotels didn't really fit well into the city's Community Gift Card Program. We needed something different for them, but we wanted to know more about the specific impacts that COVID had on their bottom line. So we surveyed fourteen of our local hotels with the help of our third-party economic development consultant. We gave them the opportunity to provide feedback in person, confidential feedback to our third-party consultant. They may be a little hesitant to open their books, if you will, in a public setting, so we gave them that option, and then staff also offered to meet with them privately. Unfortunately, our response rate was a little underwhelming, with about twenty-five percent of those hotels responding. The only takeaways were that hotels seemed to be open to some kind of marketing assistance, help with staffing, which honestly, everybody was during the peak of the COVID pandemic, and perhaps some help with consulting assistance. So at this time, staff and HDL are not confident that this is enough information to formulate a hotel-specific program, which was our goal, but unfortunately, the info that we're receiving back, it's just not enough to make recommendations. On top of that, vacancy rates appear to be low. So these hotels are, in fact, busy, and the city's TOT revenue has rebounded. So perhaps such an aggressive number to support hotels isn't really needed, but that's something that I will cover in the staff recommendation part. So, little bit of a flashback to the days of COVID-19 and where SEEP came from. We developed SEEP during, really, the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. A lot of restaurants were closed, you couldn't go to hotels, a lot of people weren't even coming into work. The American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, was passed in March 2021, and the purpose of ARPA was to provide cities with funding to stimulate the economy and plug budget deficits. Many cities in California were struggling financially, particularly cities that rely heavily on tourism-based revenue, which thankfully, Lake Forest, in this case, does not. The city established budget categories for ARPA after the interim final rule was published. The interim final rule was a temporary set of regulations that cities could use to determine how to spend funds on infrastructure, housing, and economic development. It was a very convoluted process. I know that the members of the ARPA committee probably recall that and how convoluted it was and just hard to make these categories. However, eventually, ARPA rules were finalized, and the final rule included streamlined options for small to medium-sized cities, and Lake Forest was one of those cities. So this city benefited from the option to streamline ARPA funds, and most of our ARPA funds went towards public safety. As a result, the city's general fund performed well that year, which afforded us the opportunity to create SEEP in the first place, but in line with the kind of spirit of ARPA and how this conversation started. So the COVID-19 emergencies at the federal and state level are now over. Relatively speaking, the economy has normalized, hotels are no longer closed, indoor dining is back, and people are moving back to the office. So the suggested next steps here are, at least for the Community Gift Card Program, I think I already covered this, but staff is suggesting to just kind of leave that be at this time. Again, almost a million dollars in funds are going to remain in circulation, even if the city council does absolutely nothing over the next one to two months, and we do expect the BOGO account to sell out by mid-November. So what happens next? Staff is suggesting to simply pause adding funds to any of the existing programs and to instead regroup with the Audit Committee on October twenty-fourth of this year. At that October twenty-fourth meeting, we'll have the opportunity to talk through a few different approaches to BOGO and some other programs that can provide economic benefit more broadly. So these are just some kind of draft ideas that we have so far, and we will come to the meeting with some more for the Audit Committee to consider. And lastly, we can also discuss at this meeting whether or not those original SEEP funding allocations still make sense today. They may have made a lot of sense back when hotels were completely closed, and you could only get takeout from local restaurants at that time, and people weren't driving to work. Made a lot of sense back then. Does it make sense now in late 2023? So staff's recommendation are to receive and file this report, and then direct staff to return to the Audit Committee to discuss potential adjustments to the Strategic Economic Investment Program spending categories. Be happy to answer questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you for the report, Sean. I want to ask our city clerk if we've received any requests to speak on this.
I've received none, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmembers, comments, questions? Councilmember Yu.
First, well, thank you, Sean. I've got a good report here, and there's three categories, so I've got to go through one by one with you. First of all, I think BOGO is good, but I agree with your assessment there. I still have one BOGO card left, and I've received several feedback from the restaurant staff. One comment there is they are wondering why not more people got the information on BOGO. Literally, it's free money, and you buy one get one free and can spend at a restaurant. So I think the BOGO's audience is still limited, so we should reevaluate how we're going to reach to the wider audience, especially resident outside of the city of Lake Forest, so we can bring the revenue from outside into our city. And just wondering, after the October twenty-fourth meeting, when we will get that report back to the council? Because ideally, I think we should have some program come up before Thanksgiving holiday season.
Councilmember Yu, we'll probably try to get something back either the first or second meeting in November, so we're in time for the holidays.
Thank you. And for the second one is hotel. I agree with your assessment during the pandemic, a lot of shutdown, now their occupancy rate is even higher than the pre-pandemic level. I think they just honestly do not need much at all, other than maybe because the labor market is very tight and need some higher retention. But I was just wondering if we do not spend the money, can we redirect the money to other part of community or business who need more help?
Yeah, the answer is yes, because these are general funds.
Okay. Okay, then my suggestion would just, we return the money, and we evaluate the option to put the money at the best place. And the third one is, okay, I don't know, day, so we still have six million dollar left here, and generally speaking, do we have to spend all the money with a timeline?
There is no timeline associated with the SEEP funds.
All right. Thank you very much, Sean. Appreciate the report.
Can I just have a quick question? In between the different times that we've allocated money for the BOGO program, there seems to be a lead time. And I guess one of the things of concern from the residents in this last one is that, okay, the funds kind of expired, and then we brought this back to council, we approved another five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, and that there was a gap of time between when those funds ran out and the new funds were actually enacted. What kind of a lead time would you project that we need to, if we're going to go that route, to approve a next round of BOGO?
If you didn't want the account to run out at all, I would say two weeks before staff projected to run out. That would mean really the next, either the next city council meeting or the first city council meeting in November. That's staff's projection that it'll run out mid-November. It could pick- It could pick up, it's a little unpredictable. We've had weeks where we thought, oh, you know, we still have three weeks left and then all of a sudden, we got three days left and we're kind of rushing to the city council. So, yeah. If the city council doesn't allocate more money to the BOGO program, either at the next city council meeting or the city council meeting after that, it is highly likely that there will be another gap, if you will.
Okay, well, I think continuity is important. So I want to make sure we stay on top of this and then after the Audit Committee reviews the options, to make sure we bring that back in a timely manner so we don't have any gap, especially with the holidays coming up could be another time for us to economic development if we're going to go that route with BOGO. Okay? Okay, Mayor Protam.
Got to hit the right button, I have too many buttons, microphones, I apologize. Is staff concerned that we'll run out? I mean, you're saying it's a possibility, which I appreciate that. Is there a sense that we should provide a bridging amount to help make sure we can get through? Because I know the Audit Committee's on the 24th. I don't know what's going to come out of that, obviously. And depending, maybe we've got all the wonderful answers on the 24th and it's just a matter of coming back. But in the off-chance that we need more time to review other matters or develop other aspects, do we think that having a small infusion of money tonight to supplement would help bridge and remove some of the concerns?
Anything would, you know, it's a projection, so it might not. I think if we bring something back, the first meeting in November, I think the city will be fine. Because you've got to remember, just because the money ran out and you can't buy it, like Sean said, there's still almost a million dollars out there to be spent on current cards. So the restaurants and the businesses will still see that influx of BOGO business to them, even though the money might have run out. Then you're going to get cards, you're going to buy. Our next round is probably going to go a lot quicker than these first last couple rounds because it's during the holidays and maybe we bring back a little more than the $565,000 that we've brought back in the past. So just bring back a little more money and ask for a bigger appropriation on the first meeting in November and then go forward from there.
Okay.
Councilmember Voits.
Yeah, I think that if I take the mayor's comments, I don't think that it's good to run out and stop and then start again. It's kind of like getting it going again. So I'd like to have an update at the beginning of November and let us know where that's at. That way, we can infuse more money before we actually run out of the sale, purchasing of BOGOs. Because the fact is, it's an on and off again, I think it throws the public off.
Okay, Mayor, council members, that's what the expectation is. We'll bring back a staff report with an appropriation in the first meeting in November.
Thank you.
Okay, so for this item, we're going to receive and file and then go to the Audit Committee for looking at options. So no vote necessary for this particular item, is that correct? Okay, moving on to discussion item number seven. Madam City Clerk, could you please read this item?
Yes, Mayor, the title of this item is the 2023-2025 Capital Improvement Program Update.
Welcome, Doug.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We'd like to provide an update on the city's capital improvement program. And with that, we'd like to start with a video of a recently completed project.
Lake Forest pups no longer have to bark in the dark. Hi, I'm Mayor Doug Servo and in this episode of the Mayor's Minute, I hear some special guests, of course, our city manager Deborah Rose. But of course, we also have our dogs. We've got Donnie and my dog Jet. Well, the pups wanted to join us to share a tale of good news. The dog areas at Portola Park are now a lighted area. Deborah, can you shed some more light on this amenity for dog lovers to enjoy?
Of course, Mayor. When Portola Park was designed, the city council decided to pause on installing lights to see what the public wanted. That was 2020. Since then, the public use has been terrific. And so now the council members directed staff to install some lighting at the pickleball courts, the volleyball courts, and last but not least, the dog area.
Now, of course, the lights are lower than those on the sports court to avoid bothering neighbors. That's why that was designed that way. So with it getting dark earlier, the new lights allow me and Jet to turn happy hour into yappy hour.
It certainly is the perfect ending to a rough day.
Well, make no bones about it, these aren't the only Lake Forest park improvements that are coming up, are they?
No, Mayor, they're not. Our strategic plan includes the first phase of upgrades to Kavanaugh Park, renovations to the fields at Heroes Park, and the beginning of outreach and design work for improvements at the Etnies Skate Park of Lake Forest, the Nature Park, Lake Forest Park, and Vintage Park, among other projects.
Wow, got an impressive list of things that are coming up here. You know, can I find the seven-year strategic plan? Yes, of course, that's on our webpage. And with all that work coming up, maybe now is a good time for us to enjoy some moments with our pups.
That's a great idea.
Well, the only problem is that if I throw the ball, Jet won't get it back or bring it back.
No?
No, I guess he finds it's a little too far-fetched. And with that, thank you all for watching. I look forward to showing you more of the magic of Lake Forest in our next Mayor's Minute. Now, where'd that pooper-scooper go?
Wow, Mayor, you did a great job recapping our upcoming projects.
Well, thanks for warming my heart and showing that. And everybody got the 14 puns that were in there. I have a prize for them afterwards, okay, go ahead.
So are there any questions?
Oh.
I'm kidding. Let me go into more detail on our CIP projects. In June, you approved the 2023-2025 CIP program, adding 34 new CIP projects. Staff is in process of scoping these projects and preparing requests for proposal for design consultants and planning public outreach. In addition to the 34 projects, new projects, we've been working on to complete projects from previous CIPs. As part of the Neighborhood Parks Program, we recently completed work at five parks, including Regency Park, which got a walking loop with benches installed. Borrego Overlook Park received new play equipment and updated amenities. Vintage Park, we also installed new play equipment and a walking path with exercise equipment and we were preparing outreach for a second phase of this park. Ranches Serrano and Sundown are parks received new picnic tables, barbecues, drinking fountain, and other updated amenities. And as you saw in the video, we recently completed the Portola Park lighting project, with installed lights for three pickleball courts, the volleyball court, as well as lighting along the pathway to the lower level and the dog park. And at the Arbor's Mini Parks, we installed wrought iron fencing, new drought-tolerant landscaping on the northwest corner, and wrought iron fencing and ADA access ramp and water and sewer utility connections for future improvements at the northeast corner. Here's a list of recently completed projects, including the Baik-Baffin Bay improvements, which added medians to restrict left-turn movements onto Baik Parkway. And the third phase of the Audible Pedestrian Signals project are the additional projects, in addition to the projects we already talked about. Moving on to projects that are under construction or in pre-construction, the El Toro Portola Parkway widening project is nearing completion. This Lake Forest transportation mitigation project installed dual left-turn lanes in both directions on El Toro Road and dual right lanes on the westbound El Toro Road. Today, the contractor ground the asphalt on the westbound lanes in the intersection and tomorrow, they will be paving these areas. Slurry Seal Zone A and the Sports Park Parking Lot Slurry Project is going to be coming to council at the next council meeting for award. The Street Tree Replacement Project is a program that's also under construction. This project is replacing... Hang on. I don't have a slide for that one. The Street Tree Replacement Project is also under construction. This project is replacing about 90 trees that are damaging property walls that have or have the potential of falling during high-wind conditions. The goal of this project is to replace trees with a more appropriate size and type for the city's parkways throughout the city. Other projects include the Baik-Tribuco Widening Project, another lift-in project. SCE will be relocating the utility poles for this project in the next month. The Senior Center Patio Cover Project, the Sports Park Office Renovations. Phase 13 of the ADA Ramp Project will start construction in the next few weeks. The new street name signs and Pittsburgh Park Gazebo Repair and Replacement are in the bidding and award phase. Moving on to projects that are in the design phase, we have a lot of projects in design, as you can see from this list. Notably, several of the lift-in and FCPP projects are moving forward as well as some of the arterial resurfacing projects. We anticipate having several projects out for bid by the end of the calendar year and under construction by early 2024. We'd like to bring your attention to one project in particular, the Los Alisos-Mearland's Intersection Improvements. This Foothill Corridor Phasing Project would construct dual left turns in all directions at the intersection of Mearland's Boulevard and Los Alisos. In order to accomplish this, we need to widen Mearland's requiring right-of-way from the Los Alisos Intermediate School as well as widening over the bridge over Aliso Creek. Rather than reconstructing the existing bridge, the city's design engineer proposed removing the sidewalks on the existing bridge to accommodate the traffic lanes and installing two pre-constructed pedestrian bridges adjacent to the existing bridge. We wanted to take this opportunity to show you the type of the pedestrian bridge we'd be proposing for this location. These bridges match the current Mearland's Bridge style and are similar in style to the Alton Parkway Pedestrian Bridge and the small pedestrian bridge inside of Veterans Park. Onto upcoming projects. These are projects that require resident outreach and feedback from the community prior to moving forward with further design. Vintage Park Phase Two would continue renovations at Vintage Park, replacing existing wood retaining walls along the slope and perform outreach regarding the decomposed granite walking path and additional lighting at the park. Postcards are being mailed out to more than 400 homes around Vintage Park, soliciting their input this week, and the survey will remain open through the end of October. Kavanaugh, Peachwood, Nature, and Lake Forest Parks are a continuation of the Neighborhood Park Renovations Program, enhancing the character of the city's park system. Staff is preparing an RFP for design services, public outreach to the surrounding community, and completion of a preliminary design for both parks. After the preliminary design is approved by council, Public Works would coordinate on the preparation of final design plans and assist in the bidding process as the project moves forward in the construction phase. The citywide pickleball court analysis and court installation would install a pickleball court at El Toro Park as well as perform a study and public outreach to determine the additional appropriate locations for pickleball. The Foothill Ranch Box Lacrosse Rink Installation would replace one of the roller hockey rings with a new box lacrosse rink, allowing for a new sporting activity for residents. One roller hockey rink will remain. Staff is preparing an RFP for design services and outreach for this project. The Etnies Skate Park Project will renovate the existing main building, skatable areas, and landscaping around the park. This project includes improvements to the existing building, exterior concrete repairs, additional shade structures, resurfacing and remodel of the skatable terrain, as well as upgrading the existing lights to LED. The existing turf viewing areas from the east side of the park will be improved to accommodate more viewing areas, interaction with families and guests, and special events. Staff is also preparing an RFP for design services on this outreach. This concludes my report and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you for that extensive report, living up to my phrase, biggest room is the room for improvement. Thank you very much. Let me just ask our city clerk if we received any requests to speak on this item tonight.
I've received none, Mayor.
Thank you. Council comments, questions? Councilmember you. Oh, councilmember Voits.
Yeah, thanks for the report, obviously. Anytime we're improving our city, it's a good thing. Los Alisos and Mearland's, obviously, you had the one side, Los Alisos, which is the Mission Viejo. Is that a joint city project?
We're working with the Mission Viejo on it, but it's a project that's through the Foothill Corridor Phasing Plan. So it's money from developers that was paid into, from the county for 20-plus years, more. So it's funded through that program.
Okay, so we will be moving some of the sidewalk on that side by the junior high?
Yes, we've also been working with the school on the right-of-way that we'll need and we've met with them several times already.
And nothing else, I'm obviously thrilled when we're improving our parks and our streets and thank you.
Councilmember you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the presentation here. After four years on the traffic commission, I see a lot of things go through the commission and come here, become fruition here. And kudos to the whole team here. And councilmember Voits already asked a question here, so this is now really come out of the pocket of our city's general fund for the Los Alisos. And regarding the APS, how many intersections and how many additional APS we're going to install this time?
Five, five intersections.
And how many APS?
What, four per intersection?
It's probably two, right?
Yeah, it's four APS units per intersection, so 20 total.
All right, thank you very much. And the last one here is, can you give me a little more specific about the Peachwood Parks Improvement?
That's what we're doing outreach to the community to find out what they're looking for at the park. That's one we need to do some public outreach on before we finish the scope. There were some items that were listed in the report that was done 10 years ago as a Tier Two phase. But because that report is so old, we want to do some outreach back to the community to find out if things have changed.
Keep my pulse there, thank you very much.
Mayor Protam Teddermer.
I pressed the right button that time. Thank you for the report. I'd like to see something like this done on a more regular basis. I know we talk about moving toward a maintenance city, but that doesn't mean there aren't still a lot of projects, capital projects that are underway and planned for many years to come. So I think this is a great way to tell the community we are still making improvements in our community and there's still a lot of things that we have designs to do. So I'd like staff to think about whether this is something we can make sort of as a standing item on some frequency going forward so we can continue to hear about it as well as let the community understand what's going on.
We currently provide a quarterly update to the commissions. It's something that we could very easily adapt and bring to council on a quarterly basis.
Whatever makes sense for staff, I think it'd be great to hear on a more regular basis. Thank you.
Yeah, so as well as we are positioned financially, it's great that, again, we're making the spend, we're investing in our community, we're finding resources for all the funding for all these elements in a very intelligent way. So kudos to you, Doug, and the staff in Public Works and the staff in general for making these things happen for our residents, just in making the quality of life of Lake Forest that much better. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is our receive and file element as well, is that correct? Okay. We're going to move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Assistant City Manager, do you have any additional reports or information to present tonight?
Mayor, no further comment.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to city council comments, councilmember Pecano.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank staff for their good, hard work. Last week, or on the week, September 20th through the 22nd, I went up to Sacramento for the League of California Cities Annual Convention, which put me in the doghouse with Sheddna. So I went to the AB 1234 training, the homelessness-to-housed breakout session, and I also went to the homelessness in Rialto and their successes. And then the city attorney and I went to a breakout session with all the attorneys that showed up about homelessness. And that's it for that. But I also, I talked about before, there's an annual fundraising gala for a touch of lug works. They're having their annual fundraising on October 28th here at the Civic Center and it's $100 for general admission. And these people, they're bridging a gap between homelessness and they're trying to get a roof over every head. And last but not least, last weekend, I went to the El Toro Mobile Home Estates where Chief Barrick had his people come out and do a fire prevention presentation. And I'd like to thank you, Chief, for that and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Voits.
I too attended the California League of Cities. You know, I've got to compliment our staff here in the city of Lake Forest because the three breakout sessions I went to, it was land use and it was future land use and mitigating property with retail. All the breakout sessions that I went to, it was ideas that we've already put into act or are still in the process of. It's still in the process of. So I just want to say that, you know, we're ahead of most cities because the fact is, they were talking about the things that we already are doing here in the city of Lake Forest. And so thank you, staff, for keeping us one of the best-run cities in, if not county, but maybe the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember you.
I share the same, prior to being on the council, one by a city in the state of California here because all the awesome work done by the staff and the previous council. And I stopped by the senior centers and sports parks early today and the staff there done a wonderful job. We have vibrant programs and so many city residents participating in those programs, from BOGOs to danceings. And but most programs are 50-plus. So I was wondering if we can have more programs accommodate younger population here. And also, I just want to follow up with the council's previous comment. I hope, you know, Sean just kind of simply gave me an update of the BOGO remaining from the next city council meeting so we can decide at that time whether we want a little gap bridging, you know. I like that continuity as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Teddermer.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. We take this opportunity during council Thank you, Ed, we take this opportunity during council comments just to kind of share some of the things that are going on in our community, and then we hear reports and presentations tonight to hopefully provide communication to our, our residents that lets them know the great city that we have here and what's being done and to keep you informed. So along that line, as I mentioned, I went to the Scoutarama weekend before last, what a great event. They had, I don't know, probably forty different scout troops that were out there. It was an all-day event out at the Irvine, uh, uh, Park Outdoor Education Center. They got zip lines, and they've got all sorts of other activities for the kids all day, so I had a chance to spend time with them, and they made some nice awards, and it was a good time talking with them. I also attended the mixer that was at Stretch Labs, because I'm the most flexible mayor on the council, I can still touch my toes. Uh, also remind everybody that it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so if you see me out there refereeing games at AYSO, I'll have my pink jersey on for you to come and make fun of me of. So just, uh, remind everybody about that and honoring folks that are in that situation. We had a grand opening for one of our newest businesses called the Sound Healing Dance Center here in Lake Forest, so I gotta attend that ribbon-cutting for them the other, uh, day on Sunday. And then, uh, just a reminder, October fifth is the, uh, National Bring Your Bible to School, so another one of the things just to kind of make people aware of. We've got celebrations for just about every day of the year, so this is another one for kids to be able to bring their Bible to school and supported by the U.S. Department of Education. A final note is that I will not be present for our next city council meeting, just to let you know. So my wife and I are celebrating our fortieth wedding anniversary on a trip overseas, so we'll leave the, uh, council activities in charge of Mayor Protam Teddermer and the rest of the competent staff and everybody else, so, uh, look forward to seeing you back in the first meeting in November. And with that, we're adjourned.